You're ready to go.
I call to order the October ninth. Westlake City School District Board of Education Work Session Roll Call.
You're not?
Here.
Lizinski?
Here.
Kraft here.
Stoll?
Here.
And Mr. Finuchin is unable to attend tonight.
Everyone will please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance by the United States of America. Do their followers relate to us?
On a nation under God, in the interest of liberty and justice for all.
As always, we like to start our meeting with our mission and vision statement. We educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and contribute to society. And our vision statement is, Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered, 21st century learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven, continuous improvement, and tangible results. And I'd like to thank our visitors for being here tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Roll call.
Kraft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just dive right in Legislative Liaison. I don't have any update right now. We've gotten a number of emails in particular about the property tax reviews and property valuation. Mr. Hopkins, and I normally reach out to you ahead of time. Do we have any sense what this proposed legislation might, how it might impact with the 20 mil floor?
You know, so they're still working through the process. The sausage is still being made. So I'm not exactly sure, but the one of the more recent proposals I've seen is trying to do the three-year average. And so two points for us here in the district is, one, most all of our levies are continuing levies. And so for when property values go up, it does not have that same impact on us like it does have, like other districts. So where we're sitting somewhere around 30 mils effective rate, 5.6 mils, please don't quote me without it, but I think that's what it is. 5.6 mils is our inside milage. And if property taxes go up, property values go up, we do see a small increase in property taxes collected because that inside milage is not subject to House Bill 920 reduction factor. So House Bill 920 says property value goes up, your milage goes down. Okay? So if we were at 30 mils and the property values double, it doesn't say, oh, well, we get 30 mils worth of double the value. They actually proportionally drop down that milage rate. Now, in that example there, if your property values double and your milage rate would drop down to say half, okay? Now you're at 15 mils. Well, in that situation, you're below what the state has as a floor of 20 mils. As far as I can tell, Westlake City Schools has not operated at the 20 mil floor in recent history. I know at least since I've been here and quite a few years before I was here, they've not been at the 20 mil floor. And I don't see us going to the 20 mil floor in my forecast or my foreseeable future that I can project. So in these cases, I don't think it's going to have a huge impact on us. But I really do appreciate the opportunity to attend our joint board meeting where we had Will Schwartz and Tony Potajal speak about these laws that are currently there. And our board was there to hear that as well. So, you know, what was shocking to me is I believe Will made a statement, and I would have to confirm this, but I think he said there's about 300 school districts in the state that do operate at the 20 mil floor. And so this could have a significant impact on a lot of school districts, but we're not one of them. The way that our current milage rate is and the way that we only have that inside milage, the 5.6 mils or so, I don't see it having a huge impact on us.
What's our effective milage ballpark?
I think right now we're around 30 mils.
Okay, so if we're on 30, and let's say the
And that's a residential rate, I'm sorry.
And the property values go up and our milage potentially goes down, could we be 20 something?
Absolutely.
This is all said and done?
Oh, we absolutely could be in the twenties without a doubt. We're looking at, I think it's next year is Cuyahoga County's turn for the 60 annual update or try update, try annual update. But either way, we, yeah, as our property values go up, we will absolutely see the decrease. I just don't necessarily see it drop.
All the way down. Yeah, right. Agreed.
Yeah, I think we would still be in the 20 range.
But we won't be at
We won't be at 20 mil or below to be artificially lifted back.
Right.
That was a great conversation that we had last Tuesday at the Great Lakes Conference Board Meeting and talking about what, all the different legislation. And it definitely sounds like something's going to be happening with property taxes, whether it goes through an official study or not.
Well, and I'll just, you know, again, I want to throw out there, just because I feel it is my responsibility to say it as, you know, again, this isn't just unique for Westlake. When property values go up, back in the seventies when they passed House Bill 920, they put in the reduction rate factor. So if someone says, oh, my, my property value went up by 20%, that does not equate, directly equate to a 20% increase in taxes. And I think people sometimes misunderstand that, including I think our legislators might misunderstand. Because we do have House Bill 920 in place, and that's going to place for, I think, 76 maybe is when it was passed? But it was in the seventies. So you're talking about nearly 50 years.
But it's always good to do a reminder on House Bill 920. On Wednesday night, Dr. Goggins and I went down to an OSBA event to honor Shante Kostin. And there was a legislative update that pretty much covered the same material. There was also a legal update, and I think the one big takeaway that I think it's important to share with the rest of the board is especially social media. If you do postings that have anything related to being on school board or running for school board, if you do get negative comments, the big thing to keep in mind is to not delete and or block them. You need to leave that up. There was a lawsuit that was regarding a number of board members about that in the state of Ohio. So just something to keep in mind.
I don't think most of you actually use your Facebook though for
Correct.
board stuff, but it is good. That is good to know, but
Well, and it's one of those gray areas where if you are posting about school things or, you know, just what I'm saying, where it's, it's one where I would be careful.
It's good to know.
So just sort of keep that in mind.
Then they say you can use the same type of same type of guidelines that you would use for public comment. It can't be obscene and, you know, different things like that.
Exactly. So, but if it's just sort of a negative comment about
Yeah.
a policy or
Right.
whatnot. So keep those in mind. Moving on to Student Achievement Liaison.
Have nothing new to report regarding student achievement? Any other board members have something to report regarding student achievement?
Got nothing else to say.
And if you want to celebrate, then I think it is an achievement, the opening of the Demon Brew at Westlake High School. They actually sold out of everything and they were closed today because Mr. Wood has to go to Giant Eagle.
Shop on Tuesdays. I said he's got it. It's a shopping day. Yeah.
He does.
He ran out of product.
I heard they might need a bigger fridge.
Yeah, and an ice machine. I think that's what Dave was saying is, Evan, you got to stop by the Demon Brew sometime. But yeah, an ice machine and the strawberry, was it the So what is it? Asahi is like the hot seller. Cold cellar. Cold drink.
So it'll be back open tomorrow or then Wednesday?
I don't know if it's going to be tomorrow or Wednesday.
Okay.
But Rob may leave us and become a barista. Be looking for a new high school.
Policy Committee, we have some policies for review for the first reading today. Finance and Audit Committee.
Kraft? Nothing to report regarding finance and audit unless we have anything to report regarding fields and anything related to that, anything new that we want to talk about.
I mean, we can, you know, give a quick update. Mr. Kostvar has been working with Vasco. We know we've signed that original contract. Work is going on. If you went back there right now, you'd see them installing the drainage today. Last week, they did the cement stabilization. So things are, we're on, we're on schedule for everything. And Mr. Kostvar has worked really, really diligently trying to get pricing on dugouts. And we did get three different vendors to price out what we're looking for. It does appear that we will, not doesn't appear, we have notified Vasco that we want to move forward with their proposal. It's the one that we discussed about here. It's the painted cinder block with a rolled roof. They're working through some of the pricing right now as they work to prepare their change order. And if we're able to, you know, upgrade the roof or things like that, we will, but we expect to have things signed within the next week or so.
When will we know as far as stabilization of grounds?
It's done.
It's done.
It's done. Stabilization is done contingency wise. In fact, Mr. Kostvar, I spoke this morning about it. We don't see anything that would have a significant impact on contingency right now. We still want to hold a little bit as we're working through that, but it is super niche.
Okay.
So we're proceeding, things are proceeding well.
Thank you.
We got a nice look at it after the parade. We drove through the back, the back lot driveway to get out, but yeah, looked good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Curriculum Committee, we don't have anything. We did tours, Mr. Wilson, through all buildings last month. Thank you again. And Community Outreach, this was, last week was a very busy week. Between honoring Shante Kostin as one of the finalists for
Right. Anything more? I know Scott had it in his updates and a little bit about anything else regarding that that you can't mention. It sounded like it was a great event.
It was a really nice event. And OSBA did a really nice job with honoring a lot of people. I mean, schools, individual teachers, administrators. And it was a nice dinner. They gave a legislative presentation very similar, as Liz said, to the one that we attended. Will did better because we liked it better. But, but it was, it was, it was really good. It was really nice. So there were four teachers recognized, and it was the Teacher of the Year, I believe, from District 9, 10, 11, and 12, right? Was that it? And I think we're 12.
12 or 11.
I think we're, I think we're 12. So she was the Teacher of the Year for our district, and as we know, advanced to the final four in the state. Nice recognition with a reading of a biography as well as, you know, pictures up. So it was very well attended. And when I was saying the District 9, 10, 11, 12, I felt like Hunger Games.
Yeah.
And then I was kind of think that, and so it was nothing like that at all. It was a very different ceremony.
Nice. Excellent. Thank you for attending and congratulations again.
So we had that on Wednesday night. We had Tuesday night was the Great Lakes Conference Board Meeting. Thursday night, we had a wonderful alumni Hall of Fame dinner.
That was a really nice event.
I thought it was the best one.
I think so. And, and the most people, what, 285? Yeah, it was very nice.
I mean, from
Except they didn't get the desserts on the table.
Yeah.
And I heard afterwards, there were gobs of desserts because nobody knew where they were and you couldn't take them home. So
Did you buy any?
Megan, no, I didn't know. So Megan apparently took it to the tailgate.
Oh, good.
On Friday. That's what I heard.
But I even thought, I mean, from, I thought the food was good, the layout was good, the green lights, you know, that they had inside the center. But even the speeches, I thought, you know, each of the inductees or family members, the one who was inducted posthumously, I thought his daughter was, I mean, they sat there and it's like, man, if my kids would ever talk about me like that. But no, I mean, it was, it was really, everyone who got up did a really, really nice job.
And the time, you know,
Yeah.
they kept the time.
Yeah.
And the fact that we had nine inductees this year, including an entire football team, and how quickly they went through everything. It was really well done.
Now, one of the, Keith Urban, one of her own, was on that team. So nice to see that team recognized.
And then Friday, we had homecoming with homecoming parade and the tailgate and the game. And the first half was great. Though I will say Cooper Rummel's 100-yard touchdown was pretty amazing to watch. But they did a great job of parade and everything else. And I've not heard any issues from the homecoming dance, so I'm guessing everything went well.
Rob said over 900 students attending. And if you picture that in our rotunda, very well attended, very well behaved, and I think people had a good time.
We had the opportunity to attend the Westlake Bay Village Rotary Golf Outing on Friday. Mr. Mavor, Dr. Goggins, and myself golfed on Friday, which was a lot of fun. So continuing to build that community with Rotary. Also, Dr. Goggins and myself had an opportunity to join the University Hospital's Community Advisory Board. They have their annual golf outing, which was on Tuesday. As we had an opportunity to continue to build that community. What else was going on?
So you guys have golfing for PGA next year.
It was like, I don't think I've golfed twice in a week, and I can't even tell you how long.
Right. And I know Mr. Wilson is coordinating the applications for the Westlake Educational Foundation. So that foundation, we're building that and getting ready for our next round of grants. So that we're working on as well. That started last week too.
Fantastic. Any other community outreach? Okay, let's move on to board discussion. We've agreed in crucial conversations, and we were finishing our three, I believe it was, it was chapters eight, nine, and 10. No, part two, the end of part two. It was chapters eight, nine, and 10. State my path, explore others' paths, and retake your pen.
I know Mrs. Lizinski was touching on the somewhat dryness of the book. I thought I would focus. Again, why, why are we even reading this? And I know many times we'll reach out for some involvement from, say, a management consultant, you know, how can we work best together? And I love my board. I think we work well together. We don't always see eye to eye. And how can we, rather than reaching out to management consultant, how can we reach out to ourselves in order to work best together? So this book is a part of that. This page that I passed out, literally just looking at that initial crucial conversations model, does summarize pretty much all that is captured in chapter eight and nine. So it's a very brief look and read as opposed to having to read those chapters, but it's a good reminder, I think, to take with us for the future. Had an opportunity to use this model today. Having a conversation with someone that looked at something very differently than I did. And I know that that is covered sometime. If you look to the left, my meaning, I wanted to share my meaning. I certainly didn't want to have it all focused on me. So I also had to bring in that other person's meaning as well. When I was talking about my meeting, it's important that I start with the heart. I wouldn't necessarily want to attack someone and say, hey, it's my way or the highway, but really say why I think what I think. State my path and make a case for it and make it safe rather than engaging in a conversation that again, might seem maybe cruel or unfair. Make it a safe place so that that person shares their meaning. Their meaning, from my point of view, I need to learn to look for that meaning as opposed to just going my way or the highway. Seek a mutual purpose and explore other paths, not just my path. Both of us had to break through some of those walls, and you see how it is circled, that pool of shared meaning is in the middle. Silence is sometimes a wall. Maybe I engage someone that sees something differently than me, and I just choose not to engage. And sometimes that doesn't always come to that good shared meaning solution. To build that safety, other times, other than silence, sometimes that wall could be verbal violence that wrecked very negatively to someone that has a different path. And that doesn't really get to a shared pool of meaning. So I just thought this was a good way to kind of summarize those chapters and a model that allows us to always move towards action as opposed to inaction or getting stuck. Helpful?
No, very helpful.
Super.
So there's a video that I need to go to, to watch. How to respectfully disagree about politics. Violent arguments. My twin, my husband, who's an identical twin, he and his brother have these violent arguments. And I'm thinking, this is a video we might want to watch because
Thanks for sharing from the heart because that's, you know, this, this is a way to find some resolution. And can you touch on something that really is going on nationwide?
Yes, yes.
It's a means of coming to some solutions that involve everyone's
So I'll, I'll watch it and I'll let you know.
Thank you.
And then the other thing that I liked was on, it was in chapter eight, on page 174, is some ways to when you're disagreeing, instead of saying the fact is, you say, in my opinion.
Right.
Okay, everyone knows, and you say, I believe. That's a stupid idea. Say, I don't think it will work until the reasons. So I like that.
I think what I've liked about this has been how they take their vignette through multiple chapters. And, and then you, how a situation comes up, and then they start to talk about what an instant reaction could be, and then it talks about some content, and then it shows the middle part of the story about some things you can do. And then it closes it, like, you know, one of the last ones they talked about was they started with the money, you know, missing from the person. And I guess what I liked about the end of that example is it didn't turn out that it was a misunderstanding. The kid actually took it. And so that was the part, you know, because a lot of times in these books, they, oh, they found out that it was, it was a complete misunderstanding and it didn't happen that way. But it's the the way that they ended it was more of the resolution as opposed to trying to win and prove right. You know, it was more of a productive resolution instead of just a, I won and I was right and you were wrong. So that's
No, I thought, as I was reading this, the big takeaway that really kind of hit me was, is I wish I had this book 25 years ago when I graduated college. You know, this is just one of those where, you know, it's so many of the things that I learned about myself over the years. Yeah, I definitely feel like, oh, this would have been much, very helpful back then. But no, I really appreciate especially the, when you're in agreement, but you're disagreeing over a small context thing. So don't turn that agreement into an argument. So some really great points throughout.
Yep. I found, I teach a course in organizational behavior. A lot of this stuff is really there more on the theoretical side. But, you know, a lot of what is in this book is the practical side of the outcome of org behavior. I found it very interesting.
Yep. I took one of those classes at
That was one of my favorite classes. Wow.
Very good.
Um.
They want to audit your course.
We have three chapters left, I believe it is, to wrap up the book, all of part three. Um, do we want to try to read it and then discuss at OSBA?
Sure. You're a good idea. Yep.
In this way, we can wrap it up? Okay. Sounds like a plan. Any other board discussion on this book? Thank you, Kraft, for bringing the book to us and for reading and urging us, reading and providing us with books. Um, for comments? Okay, see none. We have a first reading of the policies. Dr. Goggins?
Sure, I could talk about those. And I shared, I was, what was really, one of the things that I was really excited about and with the legislative update, that joint board meeting that we had, many of these items were discussed. Where talked about third grade reading guarantee, talked about, they brought up the planned procedure disorders, blizzard bags. Let's see, other ones in here, transportation was discussed. Equivalent education outside of school, which is homeschooling. So a lot of these things we talked about. So I really thought it was a good time to try and send this out because as you looked at them, they were probably pretty familiar and freshening, a little bit of a backstory behind it. One thing that I did put in my policy description update is a sample resolution. I don't know if I, well, I don't know if I actually included that with, maybe I didn't send that with the general boards, but I may have sent it with, to the Policy Committee. And the sample resolution, it really, all it's going to be is, that is something that I will ask to be on potentially the October Board Meeting. And what that does is throughout our policy, there's references to ODE, the Ohio Department of Education. And what's happened is they're looking to transition that to DEW, Department of Education, or something that nature. And so instead of going through and changing all of our policy, this sample resolution or this resolution will say, we're making the statement that where you see ODE, replace it with DEW, and then as we update each of these policies that have ODE in it, then we'll change it at that time. We're not going to go through and just change, you know, do a search, a control F for ODE and replace it with DEW. Now, there, there is a restraining order, temporary restraining order against this action happening. If it's not resolved by the end of the month, then I will likely just push it off to November until it is. But if it is resolved, then it really is DEW now. Then I'll put that resolution on. The rest of them kind of going through, like I said, third grade reading volunteer, volunteers, we talked about that, where I think there's a couple of train, but I know there's a couple of trainings, one being, I believe, head injuries. I got to look to see what that was again. So when we look at the the volunteer component. Where'd you go, volunteers? Oh, one was AED training. So it was, it was AED training, and I think social, like wellness, like a wellness training as well. We're already doing that with Mr. Ranallo. And let's see, the one that wasn't covered that I'll point out is 5330.05. That's the use of Narcan in emergency situations. Our school resource officer already carries each of them, carry Narcan. So they have that just in case. And this would be having it in our nurse's office as well. So that's, other than that, I think they're pretty straightforward. I can answer any questions that you may have about them or any comments that you'd like to make.
Do we require any of our volunteers to go through the safeguarding training at all?
Which, what's the, when you mean the safeguarding? I don't, I don't think we do that.
Abusive children. I mean, the, the coaches go through
Well, the coaches go through trainings like that, but I was picturing like volunteers that are going to New Hop and other things like that or band trip. You know, they don't, we'll do the screenings, like what we were just talking about it right before this. Where we'll do this fingerprinting and those kinds of things. But the required trainings with, with, like you're seeing AED. I think there's head injuries and concussion training, everything like that.
You are seeing rolling out of the Narcan in many senses, in conjunction with like an AED machine where it's, if they're trying to have those together in a lot of different situations. And it's not just illegal drugs or just overdosing on medication. So you're starting to see a lot of places trying to train staff.
One of the bits of our, well, training One of the bits of our, well, training staff.
Training staff and having it available.
Right, and I, and I think with, I think in the policy is to have two people trained. And I'm still not comfortable just putting him in like the AED type of things. I like having him either on the. Police officer or with the school nurse. Um. You know, we'll see where that leads to, but I think as we look at this to have the the actual trained. Faculty have access to it and not just anybody as well.
Cause I'm trying to think of like our um the EpiPens that we have in the building. It's in many regards, it's being treated kind of like that. It's accessible, but it's not, you know.
Right. Yeah.
Have you still did the drug testing?
Yes, three times a year.
Uh, just bringing up EpiPen, um, how easy is it to use that?
The EpiPen?
Yeah.
My understanding, very easy, just pop it.
Okay.
I was gonna say, do you want me to pull one out?
Yeah, do you have? I I was just curious if.
I think, no, it is, it is.
Yeah.
Put it in your thigh.
When you have a child with an allergy, you walk right in uh Narcan is very similar and actually we can do it as part of CPR classes. This is a live one, but um you just pull up the back and just jab it into the leg.
Okay.
And it actually has some instructions very clearly.
Awesome, thank you.
Right, I'm Bob.
And and actually, you know, uh, basically the big thing they say is it's, you can't overdose on it. Similar to what Narcan, like if you need it, use it, then you call nine one one.
Uh, yeah.
And then if there, uh, there is a percentage where you have to. So usually I actually carry two, but.
That was it.
Yeah, um, anything else on these uh board policies? The first reading. Um, is there a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or an official?
Still moved second.
Roll call.
Adjourn into executive session at six thirty-three PM. Stole.
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lazinsky?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Motion carries, you are in executive session.
And no action will be taken on way of the time.